Well, great. Hey, everybody. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. So how you doing, Jamie?
Doing great this morning, buddy. How are you?
I'm doing all right. It's a crazy, crazy, crazy day. So I appreciate you guys being here. And I am having some technical difficulties. So if I'm not looking at you, it's because I have to look at screen. Anyway, I'm Dave Blom, the CEO of ISI Federal out here just outside of Washington DC. Jamie is out of Ohio. Say, hey, Jamie.
Good morning, everybody. Sitting here in the city of Inventors. Hope you're having a great day. And we've got some good stuff coming your way as we're coming up on the last 90 days of this fiscal year.
That's what it is, baby. That's what it is. And a quick disclaimer. This event is not affiliated or endorsed by GSA or any other agency, and is provided to the audience for informational purposes only. And all the participation in this briefing does not indicate an endorsement of or perch or desire to purchase from or obligation to purchase from anybody, including us or you, so that we can talk about this stuff and have a dialogue. All right? So about this webinar, we have over 900 folks that are registered. So we know that this one is going to be absolutely packed today. And hopefully, we'll actually turn people away because that'll be fun. The reason why we do this is so that you can understand how the federal government works, how you can develop a proactive strategy to go after these folks and develop powerful strategies and tactics. And we'll show you some of those today. Exactly what we do every day. We'll show off ISI Federal a little bit, especially our secret sauce when it comes to briefings and being able to reach people in the last 90 days, and give you some takeaways that you can use today. So that's what we have for now. Some housekeeping things. If you don't like the way that Jamie and I are dressed or don't like the way we look today, you can make us shrink and disappear, or you can make us bigger. Just drag that little bar. It could be on the top, it could be on the left, whatever it happens to be, and you can make us larger. The next thing is that there's a worksheet in there that I dropped in there earlier. And you will be able to download that worksheet and work through that worksheet, as well as open up that panel on the right-hand side. And you can find the chat button. And you can type in what you would like us to answer. And you have that right there with any questions that you have. Also, if you dialed in by phone, make sure you entered your PIN. If you see your PIN, that's great. We can unmute you and we can have that dialogue back and forth, which we love to do. And you can also send emails to support@isi federal.com. And we will do our best to be able to answer all the questions that you have and the things that you would like to know about. And Jamie mentioned this earlier. The last numbers that matter most, what are they, Jamie?
They are 80, and you got it right there, 445. This is coming up on the last 30 days, or actually, the last 90 days of fiscal year end as we're burning it down to the tail end of this fiscal year end and next fiscal year end, which is very important part of your planning as you look at the federal government.
It is absolutely critical to your processes to be looking at both this September and next September. And why is that? Because if you take a look at these peaks, all of these spikes happen across the board in just about every industry. There's only a few that I know of that are outside of these kinds of spikes, one of them being produce, because we did some work with the produce industries. And guess what? People grow things and buy things in the summer. And that's just the way that that goes. So with that, there's $180 billion that's available in the next 80 days that's going to be spent. And if you're not already in front of key decision makers, you're nine and a half months behind. That's the bad news. The good news is that we can still get in front of those people and also set up for 2017. Because the next thing I want you to do, I want you to be thinking of several different things here as we work through this. One of those is I want you to focus on not just this September, but next September. You do this, and you'll start to succeed in the federal government. So here we go. Real quick poll. You're here today because... First, the world's new to me. Or you need help finding decision makers who buy... You need to find the people that are buying what you sell. The next one is getting two decision makers and meeting with them. Are you having problems with meeting with those folks? Or even more important, I want to find the opportunities before they hit the street. And I really want to see if we can help you get ahead of the RFPs. And that's exactly what we're going to be doing here today is talking about these things. So let us know what you need. You can pick as many as you want, pick as many as you don't, whatever. So pick those and let us know what it is. And you got 10 seconds left. If you're new to the business, that's great. You couldn't be in a better place if you are new to this industry. You could not be in a better place. So give me a couple more seconds to be able to do that. And we'll get that to you, right? So, and 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. We're closing the polls. There you go. Just to let you know that everybody, we're all in this together, by the way. We're all in this together. If you're new to it, great. Welcome, welcome, welcome. I'm really glad that you're here. The other parts, you may make decisions that you may not even want to be here anymore, which is okay. It's better to do that than to dump a bunch of money and not make it in the federal space. So here we go. Let's get... So with that, you're here today. So what we can do to help you in that space is we provide a bunch of different things. One of the things we do, and a lot of folks are here because they don't have a GSA schedule. Jamie, tell us about GSA schedule vehicles and what they mean.
Well, GSA schedules is one of the most common purchasing vehicles that you'll use within the federal government. It's been around since the 1940s. And it is a vehicle that you will use for direct GSA purchasing. This is reserved and held only for GSA schedule holders. And you'll also use it as a badge of credential. When you have your GSA schedule, and even if you're selling to other agencies outside of GSA, having your GSA schedule means that you've been through the approval process, that you are certified and approved, that you have good past performance, or your company is safe and stable to do business with. So having a GSA schedule, a good thing to have. It's a part of government spending. And if you don't have a GSA schedule, we can definitely get you there.
That's exactly right. 100% track record. We help negotiate through the process and make sure that you're profitable in the federal space. So that's critically important. In addition to that, we also can help with BPAs, IDIQs, GWACs, the other contracting mechanisms outside of GSA, as well as some other direct purchases. So with that, I just want to let you know about those things and the other pieces that we're going to be talking about. Because once you know who these people are and you have the vehicle, you gotta go find them. And one of those things is getting the right people. And sometimes it's connecting the dots, which is why we do the business here, representation here in DC. But we take a look at the people that are buying what you sell. Then we go out and we do our job to get them to like you. That's what you need to do, that's what we need to do. They need to like you because people buy from people they like. It doesn't matter if you're in the federal space. It still happens that way, right? So the next thing is getting your message heard. Making sure that you have the right message with the right people. So that's the marketing piece. And finally, representation, as I mentioned earlier, in DC. This is the foundational king point. Instead of spending $150,000 to $200,000 on somebody in Washington DC that's qualified, and they may know what they're doing or may not, we have a system that can help you do that for far less, far less than $150,000. 93% need help with business development. You're not alone. Everybody that's here has a piece. Now, inside and outside sales that we provide, we can help with those things. Why is it that 93% need help with business development? And this is the cold, hard truth. You want to know why? Because selling to the government is hard. There's nothing fast, easy, or cheap about this marketplace. I'm not here to scare you away. I'm here to tell you what it is. And then we can be realistic about what it is, and then we can go about doing this. So let me ask you this. From what you know about this system, I believe the system is what? I believe the system is fair for everybody, that everybody has a chance, that it's set up because the FAR systems are put in place, right? The FAR is put in place. And multiple competitors, and they want it to be as competitive possible, right? So it's fair to everyone, or it's heavily influenced by incumbents. It's totally rigged, right? Or it's all about price? Tell me what you think about this. And I got a whole bunch of people that are answering the question. So here we go. Come on now. You can do it. Another 10 seconds. And then we're going to share these numbers. And this is going to be phenomenal. This is going to be phenomenal. 4, 3, 2, 1, bam. You're done. All right, let's take a look at this. Let's take a look. 6% say it's fair for everyone. 56% says it is influenced heavily by the incumbents. 22% says it's rigged altogether. And 61% thinks it's all about price. And I'm here to tell you that the 6% are not correct because it's not fair for everyone. There are people that sometimes make it fair for everybody, but let's talk about this. So let's talk about the system. We're talking about, right? We just asked about it. Is the system rigged? Well, let's talk about the system. And we'll figure out if it's rigged, right? Or figure out if it's heavily influenced by competitors. Here's the FBO system. We did this a couple of months ago, but I'm going to review this. First of all, it's reactive. 80% are virtual locked for the competition. So that's a question about the influence by the incumbents, right? The heavily influenced... The incumbents have the advantage because they're there ahead of time. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. 10% will never be awarded. And the 10% that are winnable will have a bazillion people that are involved, right? And 7,500, that leaves 7,500 winnable opportunities across the board, across the board, all industries that are winnable. Which means, uh-oh, did we lose? What do we do?
Hey, back on, Dave. You're there.
I'm here? All right.
Back on.
The biggest thing is 96% never hit FBO. If you look at it, there's 2.5 million contracts executed with dollars being sent back and forth. And there's only about 125,000 hit FBO. That means 96% don't hit FBO. So we want to talk about another system as well. The SBA system. Get a GSA schedule. Do we agree with this, Jamie?
You bet we sure do.
You bet we do. Because this is a purchasing mechanism. It's one of the easiest purchasing mechanisms that you can get. Then they say, watch FBO. We just talked about FBO. So this is the system that they give you. Monitor eBuy. If you're a GSA schedule holder, this gives you an advantage over other people because there's information that hits there that never hits FBO and doesn't hit anywhere else, by the way. So that's another piece. Meeting with Oz de Boos. Getting together with the small business liaisons, right? And I just had a great conversation with a small business liaison, Brenda, out in... Oh, Jiminy Christmas, where was she? Hold on a second. I just got off the phone with her. Scott Air Force Base, great lady. She was awesome. So this was one of the ones where it actually worked. So then go to matchmaking events and sessions, right? Where you get there and do your capabilities, and you register for the prime vendor databases, right? Here's the situation. They say, we collect information. And then we put it into our capability statement repository. Tell me what that is, Jamie. What is that one?
That would be the wastebasket over in the corner of the room.
That is exactly right.
And as your feet flies through the air that you handed off a few minutes ago, they'll yield two points as it hits the bottom of the bucket.
And not saying that we shouldn't do these things, but this system is set up. This system is set up to talk with people who are not decision makers, who do not have budgeting capability. And they put themselves in a place to be able to assist you. 50% don't even have contracting experience. How can they assist you? That's my question. So we don't, we're not going to follow this path. We're going to do our best to not follow this path. And here's the fact of the incumbents. And the incumbents are winning. Take a look at the dollars here. This happens to be in facilities maintenance, right? If you're in facilities maintenance, you know these people. If you don't know these people, then you don't know who's operating in the federal government because these are folks that are in facilities, that are doing facilities work, right? So these are the people. The dollars are ridiculously large. So with that, let me tell you something else about it with the current system. And if this doesn't make you lose your mind, hold on because we have some good news. The current system is the federal buyers already have resources. They're already satisfied with the people that they're working with. They have existing contracts, GSA or otherwise, IDIQs and BPAs and all other acronyms that you could possibly imagine. They don't like to change. And they already have relationships that they're with people they like. So this is what we're up against. And we have to answer this one question. Why should they let us in? Why should they let us in? If they don't have a reason to do this, answer this question. Why should they let you in? Should they let you in? If you don't have a value add, should they let you in? If you don't have some difference in the marketplace? Should they let you in? So here's my next question. I could win if I knew who bought what I sell, I could get them to take my call, I had a better marketing message, or I could get on the shortlist. Anybody ever heard of that, getting on a shortlist? Or if I had better proposal responses? Let me know what you think about this one. A lot of people think they have a really good marketing message, apparently. I'm not trying to sway you or anything. I'm just saying what's happening. All right. Keep it rolling. 10 more seconds, guys. I promise, we're going to make all this make sense. All right. 4, 3, 2, 1, and bam. So let you know you're not alone. A lot of folks don't know who's buying what you sell. We're going to talk about that. And some folks are here because of the marketing that we just did. We've got a whole bunch of people here, and I know some of you came as a result of that. If they get them to take your call, had a better market, you see how it is, right? So let's move to the next thing. Break out that there worksheet that's in there. Break that out, print it off. If you haven't printed it off already, break it out, print it off. We're going to start going through this worksheet. And we'll make sure that you get the information that you need. Real quick, a recap about the opportunity matrix. The opportunity matrix is what tells us whether or not we really have a shot, if this is a winnable opportunity or not. I want to know before we start whether or not we have a really good chance of winning. And according to this, you don't if it's an FBO reactive model, right? You can't do it. So days that you know before, whether, if you're the incumbent, obviously, you have an advantage. You've been under the tent the whole time. The contract size is fitting within your sweet spot. It's budgeted. And you know what the budget numbers is. Maybe you even set the budget. That it's funded. And oh, guess what? You had influence on the scope of work. Does that happen, Jamie? Do people get influence on the scope of work?
Yeah, certainly do.
All the time. All the time. Happens all the time. And then we'd start to look in at the number of competitors, whether or not we can whittle that down, getting on a shortlist or getting on a... Or maybe even set aside for 8A or service disabled, or we're working right now, right now. If you're a hub zone and you do HR staffing and staff augmentation, if you do those things, I need to know. Because we're working on a set aside for hub zone alone as opposed to having it be something else. And the agency needs it. And I don't even want to go into it because it would infuriate me what's happening right at the moment. So I'm just going to say, if you do those things, I need to know right away. Because we have a client that we're working with. And we want to, I'd much rather compete between two or three than 50 or 100, wouldn't you, Jamie?
You betcha.
All day long. So there you go. And then the turnaround. And these are the people, the CO, the PM, and the TR, and the AD are the people that are associated. We're going to talk about that. Biggest thing, getting ahead of it. Making sure you know about it ahead of time. Most of the time, we don't. If we're certainly not going to know about it ahead of time. Could be an RFI. That's a little bit ahead of the time, right? That's great. That's why we look for RFIs. We do respond to RFIs. And making sure that you get influence on the scope of work. So here's the next thing. Where do you find your opportunities? You find your opportunities on FBO or eBuy. And there's nothing wrong with this, guys, because we monitor that too, all right? I'm dogging it right now, but there's nothing wrong with it because this is the system that they give us, right? Do you get them from FBO or eBuy? Do you know from a bid notification database engine, something like that? Agency forecast, small business industry events, or direct from buyers or program people? How do you find out where these things are coming from? And then, because one of my clients, great, great explanation happens here. He says, I feel like I'm in a hallway. And I look down the hallway and it's raining. So I run down and I take my bucket and I go stand under the rain, but it stops raining. And then I look around and there's no one down the hall. And I'm constantly chasing it. And I was like, that is a fantastic analogy, by the way. All right. Just about done. 3, 2, 1, boom. A lot of folks, 44% getting them from FBO or eBuy. And the other ones are getting it through a bid notification engine, which is regurgitating a lot of the information that's on FBO and eBuy. And then nobody from agency forecast. That's something. Small business industry events and direct buyers. This is where the key is. Direct from buyers or program people. The people in that 22% operating the way that we all want to operate. This is where we want to be. Because we want the people telling us what those things are, right? And in order to do this, in order to get to where we want to go, we need to adjust our mindset and taking it... This is something I'm going to drill into everybody over the next year. That we want to adjust our mindset from opportunity to the people, the people behind the opportunities. Opportunities come from people. And they just don't appear from FBO land. They come from somebody. We got to get to those people and make sure we do that. So opportunities come from people. And people buy from people they like. You can't stop this. You cannot stop human nature from happening. They have buying patterns, which means they'll do it at certain times of the year. They'll do it in certain ways. And if you understand their ways, you can hit their buying patterns. Again, Department of Commerce. I was there yesterday. And guess what happened? We were identifying his key buying motives for him personally. Not Department of Commerce. I don't care about Department of Commerce. I care about that guy. If we know about that guy, we can then develop our responses and our approaches to it directly to their buying patterns and hit their buying preferences. Because we all have buying preferences. Hey, Jamie, just out of curiosity, you buy everything on price, right?
No, absolutely not. It's a combination of value.
I thought you were driving a Yugo. Don't you drive a Yugo, man? Everything's done on price.
I do not.
Because Yugo's out of business, right? You drive a massive Ford truck, don't you?
Yeah, I got a Ford F350. I've got a big white Ford truck, and I like them in white. That's a preference, as a matter of fact.
That's right. A white truck in preference. This is preference, right? We won't get into anything else about that. We will just say that Jamie has preferences. And so do you, and so do they, right? We all have preferences. So if opportunities come from people, where do winnable opportunities come from? People who like us.
All the way.
All the way. So that's the way it works. And that's why when you're talking with the people that are actually doing it and actually releasing these, this is where you get ahead. So how do we get people to like us? Salespeople, people love salespeople, don't they, Jamie? They love salespeople, right? They're just like this guy. Man, this is one of my favorite pictures because it so illustrates exactly what we don't want to look like, right? So we don't want to appear this way. And yet, so often, we walk in and we say, this is what we do. We show up and throw up and give them everything that we do as opposed to understanding seriously what is really on their mind. So with that, we're going to get into that worksheet. So make sure you grab that worksheet because we're going to work through it. This is some of our secret sauce. This is how we engage buyers, is what we do every single day. We do full-blown representation in DC. Sometimes I'm there with department... Sometimes department heads, sometimes with just key buyers. Sometimes within key program people. The answer falls in building those relationships. And how do you get there? How do you get to a place where you can start to engage the people that matter most? So here we go. How do we get people to like us? People like us when? Number one, we understand them. Number two, we connect with them, building rapport. And guess how long it takes to build rapport? When do we start thinking about things? You drive a white truck. So people will think something, when? A month from now?
Right away.
Right away. The second they see you as a dag on, Jamie's a baller, right? The next thing, and the next thing is we help them. Do you guys notice anything about this? Isn't there a pattern in here, right? There's two key words that are in each one of those. But the one key word that matters most, if you notice anything about this, is it's all about them, not about us. If we're not reframing our mindset to think about the people that we're going after, we're going to miss their buying motives. We're going to miss their preferences. And we're going to say, we're following the rules and we're responding to this. And if you are, if everything's fair and even, we're going to win. It's not fair and even. Is anything in life fair? I'm just asking if there's anything in life that's fair.
Not a bit.
Right? So here we are with the key decision makers. We have four of them. They're administrators. If you look on your, your sheet with the winnable opportunity matrix, these are the four people. AD, administrators. PM, program managers, project managers. COTAR, technical representative, core, right? TR, all those, that's technical representative and contracting officers. These are the four people that we need to know. These are the four people that we need to cover and they all have different roles, they have different needs, they have different reasons for making decisions, and they have different motives for their decisions. Some of those line up with the, with what's happening in their agencies and other are just personal preference, like a white truck. Some of these people drive white trucks, but not all of these people drive white trucks. So Jamie would be able to resonate with everybody that drives a white truck. Everybody else, he may be off the mark because he could be talking about somebody that can't stand super big vehicles like a Ford F-350. That's a monster truck. That's not just a truck. That's a truck truck, right? So some people, if people are driving hybrids, they don't like you, Jamie.
They're not going to like you.
They don't like you at all.
I was pulling tree trunks last weekend, by golly, and that was working out just fine.
That's right. So the next poll is where, what are the two biggest buying motives for decision makers? Your qualifications and past performance, your GSA schedule and relevant NEX codes, because they go back to NEX codes, your certification and technical proposal, or making it easy for them and valuing them? What is the key, what's the most important one? And I think you can only choose this one, right? All right, so we got five more. I'll give you another, I'll give you another 10 seconds because people are waking up on me, waking up for me. All right, five, four, three, two, one, and bam! And this is kind of a trick question, but not really. And 56% got what I would consider to be the best answer. And the poll that we're talking about here with qualification, past performance, great. Thank you for responding to that and we're going to get on to this. So let's talk about the key buying, buying, come on, you can do it. There you go. I know it'll work somewhere along the line. So here, we're going to talk about all four of these folks and we're going to talk about the key buying motors for each one. Number one, for contracting people is make it easy for them, value them, and make it safe so they can cover their butt. These are the, these are the things that are most important to contracting. Sometimes I fill out a Form 1449 for them. I'm, am I doing their job? Absolutely, I'm doing their job. Do they appreciate the fact that I'm helping them do their job? I think so, sometimes. I don't always win, but I do win a lot because we'll wind up filling those things out. Valuing them falls under, I'm going to say three letters, they are DMV. If that doesn't send shivers up your spine if you have to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles, I don't know what does, but this stuff infects our brain and then we start thinking that all government people are like that and all these folks are doing these things, right? The next thing for the technical reps, you're looking, what you can help them with is their cert, the certs, because they're helping assemble the docs, the specifications, and helping them look good. Again, some of that's professional, helping them look good is personal. And you can help them look good before you even have a contract. Did you know that? You could actually do that before you have a contract, giving them, I was with, I was with somebody who reports to the Chief Information Security Officer, who reports to the CIO. He's two levels down, he's trying to get things done. I have a meeting with the CIO. He's two levels, he can't get me to the CIO. It's too much of a political exposure for him to refer me to the CIO. So what happens here is that we can help make that connection. Say, hey, when I talk to him, I'm going to be talking with him about something else, but I'll make sure I bring you up because I like the way you're thinking. And you get brownie points all the way around. All right, so the next one is program and project, tying in with the initiatives that are happening in the agency, so knowing what the agency's doing, right? And help them look good. Again, helping them look good. For who? For their boss, for themselves? Who doesn't want to look good? That's why Jamie drives a big white truck, right? So he looks good. It's not because of anything else, because he likes the way he looks in the truck. And you talk about something that some of the key dealerships are doing nowadays, you know what they do? After you take a test drive, you pull it back inside and there's a big mirror on the, on the left-hand side and you turn and you look.
There you are.
There you are, inside that vehicle, and guess what? You're looking good and at it.
Pride of the dealership, you bought it.
That's right, you done bought it. So the next one is administrators, mission, tying it in with the mission of the agency, making sure you understand what the political exposure is, giving them good political exposure, and selling to ego. Are you thinking that SESs and senior executive service people don't have egos? Are you thinking that other people that are up, climbing up the food chain don't have egos? Selling to ego is one of the easiest ways to be able to penetrate. So these are, these are the buying motives, key buying motives, make sure you keep those. And this is helping you get in front of those buyers and making them want to meet with you and giving, answering the question that we asked before, why should they let you in? So this is included, so you know, in all of our business development approaches. If we're doing full-blown representation, we're doing this every day. If we're doing sales support for you, inside sales support, outside sales support, doing marketing for you and those things, these pieces can be included in those, in those solutions if that's what you need. There's very few of what I'm going to say in the next 20 minutes that does not apply universally. Across the board, big business, small business, everybody, doesn't matter. Using these to help them identify why they should do this with you. With our BD support, we help you get attention, we can help elevate your status in that, maintain your awareness in the accounts. Some of this is brand awareness, some of this is just, you know, do you see Dave Low enough? Do you see Jamie Zell enough? Do you see, do you talk to Aisha enough? Do you talk to Trent enough? Do you talk to Mercedes enough? Do you talk to all my folks and talk to Nicole enough? Do you talk to, do they talk with you enough to remember that when something comes out that they want to remember you? Getting the meetings, getting shortlisted, critical is getting shortlisted. Getting yourself within that pool of people that's competed between three or four or five all the time. 80% of contracts get competed between less than five competitors. How does that happen? It happens because that's their shortlist. It could be a real shortlist that's identified by an IDIQ or BPA that's been awarded, or it could just be four or five GSA schedule holders that they know they can reach out to. And it happens every single day, every day this happens. Advancing the sale and ultimately winning business that never hits the street. That's what we're after because the stuff that's hitting the street, it's too late, right? So we're going to be talking about ISI briefings. This is what we do for our clients. We send out an initial invite, a sec, you can do this, by the way, you can do this yourself. But we'll tell you what we're doing, this is why I want you to do, some of your folks have bought 250 names, up to 250 names, or you had done Market Essentials with us and we're doing these for you. So I got folks here that I know are our clients, right? I don't know why they're here because they just like to hear me talk, I guess. Anyway, but a personal phone invite with a message potentially, otherwise we don't leave messages, that's number one, actually. Then we have another reminder and we do the event and then we have a follow-up email with links and a follow-up call. And this creates an opportunity for us to be able to talk with people. I'm going to tell you some of the results we've had recently, which are ridiculous, by the way. So in order to do this, you need to, number one, understand your audience and understand what their key buying motives are. Because if you don't know who they are and what, why they make their decisions, you can't possibly develop a message that's going to resonate with that decision-making process. It just doesn't happen. And guess what? It doesn't, it's not your capability statement that's going to do it. It's not going to do it. It has to be, it has to be within their frame of reference. So the next thing we're going to do is we're going to be talking about an educational session, which is a high-level overview of what they're facing, what's coming down on their head, practical examples that they can understand, because these are folks who are buyers and not, they're experts in identifying and contract vehicles and making a purchase, but they're not necessarily, in fact, categorically not responsible for executing what is actually happening on a day-to-day basis on the program side. They're not responsible for managing you or making sure, they'll make sure that you deliver, but that all happens just so that you get paid. What we're talking about here is, so practical examples that they can understand at a high level and helping them CYA, cover their booties, right? Because if we help them be safe and one of their key things is safety, then we can say, hey, we're resonating with them. There isn't anybody there that wants to get hauled in front of Congress to explain a decision they made on a risky contract. Not one person wants to do that because it's bad for them. The next thing is talking about your procurement vehicles and what you have, what, what vehicles you have. If you have multiple vehicles, that's good. And then contact information on how they can reach you as well as the documented links that you're going to supply to them later in the follow-up email, but you can do that right now, just like we're doing right now. You have two, two things in, in that worksheet, you have the worksheet and you have the budget resource allocation worksheet. There's two worksheets in there that you can work on that'll help you within this world. Here's some statistics that we just did, and this is Hytham Bakker, he is with Bakker Group. We just did this last, oh, it was last week, week before last. And here, here's what we did. We invited 88, 120 people. We had 107 people register for the event. This is all online, just like this, by the way. Forty-eight attendees, 12 immediate opportunities, five for fiscal year 2017, 17 follow-up phone meetings and two face-to-face meetings. How many of you people can say that because of a process that you installed have this kind of results? Number one briefing, first briefing, nitro-oriented product. This is what works. This is what we just did and we're still doing, we haven't even had the face-to-face meetings, that just happened two, less than two weeks ago. We had the briefing. But this is immediate information that we can use and guess how many of these are on the street? Of these 17 opportunities, Jamie, how many of these are on the street? Take a guess.
Zero.
Zero. Not a one is on the street.
No CEO, no nothing, it's not out there broadcast anywhere.
That's right. So now we know about 17 opportunities that nobody else does, or very few people, because there are people that do know about these opportunities potentially that are coming up, but they're the incumbent. So between Hytham Bakker and the incumbent, there's two people that know, and maybe three, maybe four that are in the inner circle. Getting in the inner circle, that's the next step. This is what you want to be doing and notice that you've got to invite a boatload of people to get those kinds of registrants because you're shaking the big tree. So you shake the big tree, boom! This is what falls out. Is it always this, is it always this good? No, it's not always this good. Has it been better than this? Yes, it's been better than this. But this is something that you can do today that, that will get you in front of key decision makers before this September is done. So when you're doing this, first of all, you need to have at least 250, but preferably 1,500. And chances are you don't have that. So hint, hint, we can help with that. So the next one is pick a topic that's of interest to them, not just to you. You might be really, really interested in white trucks, but I'm sure that there's a lot of folks that aren't. But if you make it interesting to them of why maybe they should be interested in a white truck, or why they should be interested in you because you're interested in a white truck, right? Next, make your message educational. This is an educational session, not a full-blown sales session to illustrate your capabilities. That's not what this is. This is not a capabilities briefing. You can do that later, after you've already been established as a subject matter expert. How much better is that? If you're already established as a subject matter, matter expert, then then you go in and talk about your capabilities. Well, I'm an expert. You're, they already think you're an expert. Doesn't get any better than that. So pick three takeaways, three things that you want them to know when they, when they leave that place, that's valuable to them and also ties into you. And then you have to dedicate the resources and that's why that resource allocation worksheet is in there, because you can take a look at what it takes to be able to do a federal pursuit right. And then you'll be able to determine how much you can dedicate to this effort. Personalized email invites, phone invites and reminders, or messages are okay, and then follow-up after the event is critical because that's where the 17 meetings come from. The 17 meetings? I don't remember. Anyway, so guess what? This is another piece. This blows my mind because it doesn't even matter if they show up for the briefing. The 107 people that responded and said they were interested, we're after them because we know that they're there, right? But the other ones that don't show up are still getting a barrage of emails and follow-up information for Bakker Group and our clients so that they say, I'm not interested in that right now and I'm, I'm not going to attend that right now. But next week they say, oh man, somebody did something on construction management claims, I really need to know what that is. Who was that? And because you hit them so many times, six to 12 times, they're going to remember that longer than if you pick up the phone and talk to them for five, 10 minutes, right? So here's what, here's what this provides for you. This is what we do. The invite, second invite, personal call, personal email invite, reminder, event, the, the event itself, which is, which we do the, we'll talk about this a little bit more. But this is what, those are the 12, four to 12 touches, right? So in this program, what we did with this program, and this is what we can do for you, it's a two-month process, takes two months. By the time you start is the time you finish. So guess what? We are into September in the process. You don't have time to do any more than one briefing right now. You can do one briefing. And what we'll do is we'll research and target the buyers, we'll create the agenda, we identify the federal initiatives that are tying into that, and we assist you with the presentation, and then we host the presentation doing an interview style, not like this, this is Dave being benevolent dictator, by the way, and, and this, this is me just talking. But I will help or we'll have other folks, and I think Adam's here too, Adam can host, and we host it and we interview you and we identify the hot prospects, just like we did, and the winnable opportunities. Then we send out the follow-up emails and do follow-up phone calls and schedule the meetings so that you can get in front of the key decision makers, hopefully in time for this September, but if not in time for this, it's going to start setting up next year. Makes sense? And oh, by the way, professional recording will put, that you can put on YouTube and drive people towards it. It's all part of the package because it's not just about today. It's about tomorrow, it's about next year, it's about two years from now, and somebody just says, man, I wonder who does this? And they do a search. Or you keep, hopefully, you're in front of them regularly with your inside and outside sales to be able to keep the pressure on those folks that they remember who you are and what they can do when that comes. So these briefings work because, one, you reach the decision maker six to 12 times, whether they show up or not. You control the message, you get insider information that nobody else has or very, very few people have. Sometimes nobody has it. You are setting yourself up as a subject matter expert. You cannot, cannot tell you how important this is to do that. You get remembered, so you're an expert and you get remembered. Two things that are critical and you show you value them by giving them information that's important to them, not just important to you, and you make it easy for them to buy from you. This is the trifecta for you when it comes to being able to control, set yourself up as a subject matter expert and make it easy for them to buy from you. These are the things that, that work and this is what your, your incumbents are doing daily. They're in front of these folks and they are the subject matter expert. And ultimately, the idea is to get ahead of the RFP. That is what we're after and it gets you ahead of the RFP. We have 17 opportunities that we are literally ahead of the RFP. That's exactly what we do and it may not work quite that well for you, maybe you only get five. So, so you have five, five to work. Five usually is plenty to work. Right now, we're running around like crazy people doing this stuff because of the, because of the effectiveness, okay? So again, the briefing statistics, this is, this is something that we can do, we do this every day, it's part of every one of our support packages for inside and outside sales. If you're going to keep doing the sales, great, keep doing the sales. This is a support structure for you to get you those 17 follow-up meetings. Beautiful thing. So tell me this, tell me what, whether, what you think of a briefing. It'll work for you and you have a hot topic right this minute. If you think you have a hot topic that you can jump on, we can, we can get something out in front of people right away. Maybe you just need some help finding a good topic. Maybe you need it immediately and maybe you want to set it up for fiscal year 2017. There is no wrong answer here, folks. All of these can really help, right? And then it's a cool idea, but I don't really know how you can use it. That's fine too, because we will, we'll certainly help you with that. The question is, do you, can you differentiate yourself with an education message? And the answer is yes. And there's another method that we use, very similar to this, with white papers to get attention and get places. We met with senior, senior, senior people, we can get in anywhere. So there you go. Okay, give me another five, four, three, two, one, and boom! So some folks, the 17%, you're going to get a call today. The, the other one, the 25%, you're going to get a call with, with help finding a good topic, right? And the 33%, we're going to, we need to jump on that today because if you don't, if you want to do it, it's got to be done today. Got to start it today. It's not my pressure, it's a pressure to get it out before they start disappearing in August. Makes sense? So there you go, there's, there's that piece. And then, hold on, I went backwards, sorry. So the takeaways for today, three takeaways for you today. Briefings work, they absolutely work. Secondly, you can do them. You can do them and you, and if you do ISI briefing or you do BAKR briefing on YouTube, you'll come up with the briefing we just did. And I'll send you, actually, I'll send you a, I'll find that and I'll send it to you. So, oh, I'm sorry. And we can help you do the briefing. Sorry, that's the biggest one, by the way. So three takeaways, briefings work, you can do them and we can help you do them across the board. Makes sense? Questions, there's got to be questions. There, there's way too much information for there not to be questions. How are we doing on time here, Jamie?
Looking about 11:47 as a matter of fact, so we're still doing okay on time.
All right, so let's see. If a business has not been in existence for two years, then the business cannot get on GSA schedule. Any advice for younger businesses? I can wait for a response until the end of the webinar. Sorry, I almost made the end of the webinar. But the answer is yes. The answer is if you do this, you can still get attention, there's ways to be able to purchase, and if, if you don't, if you can't get a GSA schedule yet, you can team with people that do. And you can team with other companies, you can be a sub to a prime as well. I like direct, I lean towards direct. I also lean towards directly going after the federal buyers and the federal decision makers on the program side so that you have something of value when you knock on the door and say, hey, booze Alan Hamilton. You got to answer the same questions, why should they care about you? Why should they let you in? Same thing. These, these small business groups with the matchmaking sessions, why should they let you in? You sit with 50 other people, they're going to come down and say how great they are. Bob, blah, 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 Charlie Brown. There's nothing about that that makes any difference. Go dress up like a chicken and stand on a corner, in a corner on your head, then you'll get some attention. So the answer is yes, we can do that and briefings can work for this too. It also primes you for getting ahead of the RFP because sometimes it may take you two years before you actually start to get some traction. I know that is something that entrepreneurs have a hard time with. So you may, it may be a little bit too soon, but, but great question. What about price? Lowest cost technically feasible or technically acceptable? Great question. David, that's a great question. So lowest price technically acceptable is one of the, one of the key delineators that you'll find the contracting people put out there. Why do they do that? They do that because if they find the lowest price, they only have to read one, one technical response. They look at the lowest price, they open it up and say, this guy's technical review is acceptable? Boom, done. Saves a bunch of time for them. A lot of folks in contracting can't stand that because it creates a whole nother world of contract, the change orders and the rest of the aggravation that happens because of buying on low price. The same reason why everybody else tends to not buy on price alone. The other thing is making sure that it's tech, when you set the technical requirements and it's technical, first of all, I hate technically acceptable, but if they're driven by it, it may be mandated for them to do it. So you have to fit into that world. So lowest price technically acceptable, define the technical requirements and the certifications that are required so that only a very few you can do. Makes sense? So we just got a GSA schedule for staffing contract, but our company has no federal experience as co-owner, I have 13 years federal staffing experience in 46 states. How can we leverage our key personnel experience in lieu of corporate experience? Will briefings help? Yes, and yes, and yes, because if you set yourself up as a subject matter expert in particular staffing environments and you start shaking the tree and resonate with those folks, the answer is yes. And staffing is a real challenge. You know why? Because it's just about as commoditized a service as buying a computer. There's a lot of folks that do it. So the key, key thing, over the course of the next 18 months, you're, you're, and they So the key, key thing, over the course of the next eighteen months, you're, you're, and what, they give you twenty four months. To sell twenty five thousand dollars on your GSA schedule, right Jamie?
That's exactly right.
They do that because there's nothing fast, easy or cheap about it. And you got to go and do the work. Just because you have that, that's step one. That gives you the vehicle. Now you got to go get it and go pursue these people. Do not follow the same path that the other people that are failing will do. Which is follow the other, that, that process. So great, yes. The answer is yes, briefings will help and we can, we can help with that, Alan. Thank you very much. All right, let's see, what's the next one? I have been in business eighteen years and worked in a number of states on bridge preservation. Very cool. Currently working with ACOM, Santex, uh, Santec type engineering firms. Known, known for N D T corrosion, corrosion controlled bridges and marine structures. Can ISI get me to relevant decision makers that do, to do presentation? Yes, and yes. And I would say briefings, one. Two, representation in some form or fashion to help you find the right people. First, got to find the right people, right? Right, Seva? Got to find the right people and then, so we'll be in touch with you about that. And the, so first things first, finding the right people and, and that, we look for that, so you know. Is that we'll look for. Construction. And we'll also look for people that would also do that. So your competitors in the space and then feeders that would say, these folks work on bridges. There's a bazillion bridges out there and they're all in bad shape. There's, if there's anything that's going to be top of, of mind for federal support. Over the next twenty years, it's going to be bridges. Because every once in a while, we have one just stop. And collapse. So we can't have that, right? Very good, good, great question. We are an eight A economically disadvantaged W S, women owned small business and a GSA schedule holder. How can we partner with you to obtain contracts? And what is the pricing? The pricing is less than a million. I'm joking, Ravi. The way that we do that is we take a look at what you have and resources and we take a look at what you need and we'll define that. Fair enough? So we'll, we'll work up something that works for you. So, um, so what is the cost for the service? It depends what you need, Pete. Um, what we do in, in our, in our everyday environment. If it's full blown representation, it's six to ten thousand dollars a month. That's not for most. Most folks don't even qualify for that. Right? But if you need full blown representation in DC, that's half the price of buying somebody that's dedicated to you. And not knowing whether or not that works. So that's one thing. The second thing is, so it's not a hundred and fifty thousand, it's not, you know, it may be seventy to a hundred and twenty thousand or something. It could be a year. But probably not, probably, you, you probably need some, some support structure for inside and outside sales. And generally that runs in the range of twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred dollars a month. And that includes the briefings, includes the follow ups, includes the meeting scheduling. Most of the onus for the selling is on you and representation for face to face meetings and phone calls is on you. But that is, that is a very cost effective way, obviously, instead of trying to. Uh, trying to do it yourself, because that can be, that can take a huge amount of time. So that, that, there's multiple packages we can help you with. If you open that budget resource allocation worksheet that's in, in here. It'll show you the kind of resources you need. Let's see. We have not done any federal work directly. We are disadvantaged small business. Can we get a direct contract? Yes, 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 you can. When you go after the direct people, you can get direct contracts. And you don't start with going after ten million dollar opportunities. Because that's how, that has too much exposure. But there's plenty of stuff and, and who was it was talking? I think it was, um, Jitinder Singh, who was one of our clients, said, I just want the crumbs. Just give me the crumbs. Sometimes the crumbs are a million bucks. Right? So look, if you're looking at billions of dollars. And I was just talking with Keith Hasty yesterday on the way back from DC after our meeting. And we were talking about, I was like, look, even if this last contract, which is worth a hundred and sixty million dollars with two companies that won. If you look at that. How much is Defense of Commerce, Defense Commerce, Department of Commerce spending over the next five years? How much? How much for staffing? Is which, that's what we're after. We're after some strategic staff, staffing resources, right? So how much of that, how much above and beyond that is going to be this? It's, it's billions, folks. It's billions. And we don't have to be greedy. Don't get greedy, just take the pieces that are in your sweet spot. That's why that, that opportunity matrix, look at the opportunity matrix, define the ones that are in your sweet spot. Identifying those buyers, shaking the tree, identifying the buyers. And that's why that works. So the answer is yes. So, uh, Seva's not eight A yet. Well, good. Well, that, this, there couldn't be a better time as you are, you probably already submitted those papers. If you submitted the papers, you know that that's a. Challenging process to, to develop and go through. It's getting better, I hear, in some instances. So, but eight A is one, one thing. Don't lead with the eight A, leave with the qualifications, how great you are and that you're a subject matter expert. And then, oh, by the way, we're eight A, consult sources to us for the next nine years. And, and then you can start, start winning contracts. All right, any other questions? I did, I don't know if I'm accessing the, the emails. If you're sending it to supported ISI Federal, we'll get to you because I don't have access to that right minute, right this minute. So let's get back to this. The current buyers, federal buyers already have those resources. They need a reason to let you in. And if you want in, you got to give them a reason to let you in. And one of the, and this happens over the course of time. Sometimes it happens faster than not. If there's something that's going wrong internally and somebody's screwing up and you come along at the right time, we'll take luck all day. All day long, we'll take the luck. What we can do is we can provide you with unmatched information and insight into what you sell. This happens to be, uh, folks. William Scotsman does trailers and temporary offices and things like that, temporary shelters and things. These are people that are buying. They're, they're individuals. The, if you're, if you're focusing on the people and not opportunities, this is what you have to do. Find the people that buy what you sell. And this is in major places and minor places. Uh, sometimes you're going to find agencies you don't even know exist. I know I, I still find, I didn't even know that existed. Millennium Challenge Corporation, Corporation for National Community Service, all these folks. Contracts that happen every day. So with those, we're looking for activity and we're looking for dollars. So I love folks like Don and Matthew. The reason why is because you're talking about twenty one contracts for four point five million. All of those are crumbs, folks. All of those, even one point one, ah, that's maybe not a crumb. But take that one out, you got twenty of them. For three point five million. Lot of crumbs. Good crumbs for small businesses, right? And the next piece is dealing with getting out in front of these folks. We've been talking about all the time. Introductions, email campaigns, follow ups, making sure that you're talking to these people. Using online briefings, using strategic tools that will help you get in there and tactics that will help you get in there. How you conduct a phone conversation is just as critical as the people that you're going after. And knowing that until they actually control some money, they don't have any authority over you. And you can pick up the phone and talk to forty of them and they can go tell you to die under a bridge. I had somebody say that to me. Go die under a bridge. Fine. I know he's not irritated with me because he can't be that mad with me. He doesn't even know me. Right? So any additional questions? We'll, we'll do our best to get to those. And is there any more yet? Let's see, how can I? Uh, do we have one more from CP? How, how, how to effectively partner with primes and develop relationships when relationship does not currently exist approaching cold? This is another great question. I love, love, love questions. Thank you very much. How do you effectively partner with a prime? You got to give them the same reason. And the best reason that you can take to a prime is that you got something that's important to them, that you want to team with them on. Go direct, get the relationship direct. And if they say, oh, you have to go to Deloitte. Or, oh, you have to go to SAIC. Or, oh, you have to go to one of the big boys because they, or Lockheed Martin has the prime. Contract. Take that conversation that you just had with the buyer, with the program person. And take that to the program person within Lockheed Martin and say, hey, I was talking with these guys, I think we can help them. I know you got this contract vehicle. We'd like to be able to funnel the money through that contract vehicle. And leverage our small business component so that, that Lockheed Martin gets the credit. And that will get you in far, far faster. In fact, I'll ask the question, I didn't ask it earlier, Jamie. Has anybody ever gotten a phone call from a prime that you registered for with a small database? Small, small business database at an event? I'm not talking about a partnership agreement. I'm talking about you walked up, you registered, you listened to the folks that are there, you registered, signed up. Did you ever get a phone call? Just one. Eight years I've been doing, eight and a half years I've been doing this. Not one. Has happened. So if you've done it, you're one, right? So with that, um. We'll get, we'll get back to with UCP as well. We'll talk about that, that approach. But briefings, classic way to be able to do that. So to win federal contracts, we're finishing up here so we can get you out of here because it's already probably too late. To win federal contracts, I need to be proactive. You've got to be proactive and get out in front of those folks. Pick out what you need from us and we will help you be proactive and get in the federal marketplace. This is what we do every single day. We can help you with the briefings. We can get there's a hundred and eighty billion dollars in the next eighty days. And a six hundred and eighty billion in the next four hundred and forty five days. These are key numbers for you. Because we'll take the shot. Well, if we take a shot now, it's a half court shot. I'm being really, really real for you. Now, we may be somewhere between. Charlie Brown and Steph Curry taking that half court shot depending, depending on the, on what you have. But we'll take the shot because you're going to miss a hundred percent of shots you don't take. So take the shot, get in there. Set yourself up for two thousand seventeen. So the next thing is we could do, but you got to move. You got to start doing this and get proactive and be in the marketplace. You can catch us on YouTube, you can catch us on LinkedIn. Don't tweet me, don't Twitter me, don't Facebook me, I'm not there. And I meant to take that off. Jamie, you did remind me about that.
I need to do that, right?
Yes, they do that. Next session is August ninth. That's the second Tuesday of the month and you guys are welcome to join us for that. And it's finishing strong. We need to finish strong. Make sure that we're setting ourselves up for what's going to happen in September. We'll be talking about that for the next two sessions. And then we'll be getting to the strategy and the sessions for two thousand and seventeen. Actually, September is really going to be some, some last minute things that you can set yourself up for. Uh, but if you're doing the briefings, if you're in front of the people, if you haven't purchased, if you want to test for yourself. You got email, a lot of folks got emails on NEX and a lot of folks in GSA got their information. Buy one of those and start at least making the phone calls. You'll start to identify how difficult it is to get to people. And you'll start to identify some of the reactions, I'm too busy. And what happens with that? And then what do you do? And then making sure that you have something of value to them, making sure that you have that. So finish this all, thanks for joining us. Jamie, got any parting, parting thoughts for, for folks? Especially when it comes to making sure that your GSA schedule has the right information on it this time of year. That's pretty important.
That was the one thing, I want to make sure for you existing GSA schedule holder. If you don't have a schedule, we can get you there. If you do have a schedule, make sure it's current and correct and up to date and everything is correct. Uh, you can do that yourself. If you need help with it, we can help you out. We've been doing this for almost fourteen years and, uh, what we're, we're good at. We'll make sure your schedule is correct and sings the way it should. So they can maximize what it can do for you as a purchasing vehicle. Any questions? Right there's my information, give me a call.
That's super. Yep, reach out to Jamie, reach out to us. And, um, feel free, feel free to, to, to email either one of us. We, we love these things. And, um, I need, I need to jump in just a minute. So we'll keep this up for just a little bit. Let's see if we have any other last minute questions. Do you feel that GSA e-buy is any better or worse than FBO? It's better. GSA e-buy is better on multiple fronts. Because, um, and we have an engine that we've been working on for a long time. Giving me a headache when I think about it. It's an internal engine. We monitor GSA schedules with a, with a tool. And we monitor e-buy. It's a challenge because there's a lot of stuff that hits your SIM code that has nothing to do with you. So being able to filter those out is a challenge.